Alright, it looks like almost everybody's found a seat. So we're gonna go and get started because we're running a couple minutes late already. I want to start with a couple of announcements. If you need translation, we have a translator here. Uh, where is he positioned? Oh, back here. So we would want you to sit nearby him so he can effectively translate if you need translation.
Si alguien que necesita interpretación en español, por favor va con usted que está allá.
Uh, next thing is our facilitator who is with us and I'll introduce or will introduce later. Would love it if some of you move closer. So nobody's gonna shackle you and drag you up closer, but it will work better later in the evening if you're a little bit closer and able to participate in some group conversations. Also want to make sure everybody who's not been here knows that there are restrooms outside the door and to the right. So that is our housekeeping stuff. So at this point in time, I want to welcome you all to our regular Falltown Hall meeting, this time brought to you jointly with the Silver Falls School District. And welcome our city council who are here in the audience and school board members who will be joining us later on stage for the last part of our event. I'm Kyle Palmer, Mayor of Silverton, and I'm really happy to see this turnout tonight. So thanks again for coming. Before I say more, I want to direct you to the URL address on the screen. Most of you, I hope, got a piece of paper handed to you about the meeting Pulse program that we're using tonight. There's no app download, just go to the address on the internet ready phone and get started. It's really easy and it's a great way to provide and follow feedback throughout the evening and up till later tonight at some point. It's also anonymous, so no worries about anybody calling you tomorrow and harassing you about whatever you said or didn't say. For those of you without an internet device, you can also provide feedback in writing before leaving tonight. If you're here tonight though, you've probably been following this community discussion that began in late September with a small group exercise planned jointly by the city and the Silver Falls Library. Much was said and heard that evening, much has been written and read since on social media. In short, our community has been very responsive to the reality that we're not doing everything we can to provide equity and inclusion to everybody who lives here. One priority that I think we share is to find ways that we can do so. How can we be the ally that's needed? How can we recognize our own inadverted insensitivities? And how can we regain the trust of those who've been targeted in our community? I am a lifetime resident of this community and while I've always believed that members of, all members of the human race deserve equal treatment, I also went relentlessly through my life assuming that everybody here in this place we live at least received that equal treatment. In making such an assumption, I've been heart of a problem and I'm here tonight to admit that fully. Silverton is a wonderful, amazing place overflowing with those who live in service to others, but we're not, it's, we're not alone in being better served by a population that cherishes our similarities and minimizes our differences. Doesn't matter how old you are, how young you are, what color you are, what gender you are, whether you're in the best physical shape of your life or whether you're all struggling to find ways to live around physical challenges. You all belong here and you all bring something special with Silverton. For some of us, this conversation started because we learned that there are those here and in our community who don't share those thoughts about equity and inclusion. Some of those lessons were jarring and hard to hear about our community. I know they were for me. I've spent a lot of time since that night thinking about what I can do, what we can do, what you can do. It's a tough question because we don't have the power to legislate thought or most speech or very many actions. We do however have the power to create and encourage dialogue and that's why we're here tonight. To shine a light where some might prefer we don't and to expand the conversation to the level where it becomes uncomfortable to live here and practice anything less than decency to every neighbor. I encourage you all to listen tonight, to speak if you wish, and to think about how we can contribute to making this a welcoming place for all. Not long after the library meeting, I was contacted by our interim superintendent Paul Peterson. He's provided his partnership as we move forward and it's my pleasure to have him joining us tonight. And I know I speak for the city council and I say it's our pleasure to have the school board here as well. Please welcome Paul Peterson for some comments as well before we get started.
Good evening, for both of you who haven't been here, Paul Peterson, the interim superintendent for this year. And just so, on behalf of the Board of Directors, welcome to Silverton High School and thanks for coming to share with us your thoughts. We have something really happening that's exciting in Oregon called the Student Success Act. This is sort of a once in a generation opportunity to look at education and the funding and do things differently. So tonight, as Mayor Palmer says, is about this dialogue and listening and I want you to know that this is really important to the school district, it's really important to the school board members who are all here. And it's important to us because hearing these voices helps inform how we're going to spend some new revenue that's coming into the schools that is intended to make a difference in the lives of kids. So just, I just want you to know how much we appreciate hearing your voices tonight. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over. So who's up next?
Kristy Davis.
Kristy, okay, here we go. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Kristy Davis. I live here in Silverton and I have the great privilege of serving as the Director for the Silver Falls Library District. Tonight I had the honor of introducing to a wider audience of our community Chisau Hata. Chisau's Oregon Humanities Program, Can We Get Along, was co-hosted by the library in the city of Silverton on August 27th of this year. A lot of big and good and sometimes surprising things happened that night at the library and I believe that they will continue here tonight as we work towards common good. Together we can, we can learn the rewards of listening deeply while we are on our own journey towards a community where we all feel safe, seen, heard, and connected. Chisau's experience in facilitating these types of conversations is a gift of skills honed over many years of collaborative work. Chisau is a performing artist, community organizer, and global citizen artist. Through her performance work, she continues to share the Japanese-American story with communities from Hiroshima, Japan to Cuba, and New Mexico to Ontario, Oregon. Her choreo poems, inspired talks, creative exchanges, and non-traditional approaches weave together community connection. With energy and wisdom, she teaches us that through art and freedom of expression, we can celebrate what it means to be human. Her talents are shared as an Oregon Humanities Conversation Leader and Vanport Mosaic Stories in Movement Artist and Facilitator. Chisau developed Gambata, an American legacy. Stories of Japanese-American dispossession and resilience in Portland, Oregon, and she is a guest artist at the Dance Exchange in Tacoma Park, Maryland. Chisau is on the Board of Directors for the Oregon M.K. Endowment, American Music Program, and Advisory Board of the Positions for Social Responsibility. She is a founding member of Portland Taiko and Theater Diaspora and has inspired countless students to pursue the art of dance. What she says about her program, Stories in Movement, can set an inspirational tone for us this evening. Woven through our gatherings are expressive techniques that allow us to reflect and to inspire us to see ourselves in others. Ladies and gentlemen, will you give a warm welcome to Chisau?
I think I get one tonight, so that's great. Thank you so much, Kristy. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Can you all hear me? This is gonna be a little bit different because this is not the normal setup. I see when I turn my head this way, the mic acts a little bit differently. A normal setup in the conversations that we have. I don't feel as comfortable being up here talking to you down there as if we were all together talking. But I appreciate the fact that we have this opportunity to gather and that the mayor and the superintendent and the Board of all those entities and the library have asked us to gather again in a commitment to a process that is ongoing for Silverton. And here's the thing, oh, I'm gonna try not to turn my head, about Silverton. I've been in smaller cities and larger cities, but what's really interesting is when I'm in smaller cities, everyone that can affect an institutional change is sitting at the same table. And a lot of times in bigger cities, it takes five or six meetings to get everybody at the table. And I think that it could be Silverton that is setting an example for the world in how we are to learn from each other, in how we are to experience each other. And so I'm, I'm very honored to be here tonight. And so I just want to say that in the conversations that I lead, this use of space and how the room is set up is really important to how we engage with each other. And so we're gonna try to give you an example of a process that we use without having it set up in a way that's more comfortable. And that is, a lot of times when we first interact, we do that non-verbally. So what I would like everybody to do, and this is not a test, but I know you can do it, is turn around, look around, and non-verbally greet other people who are in this room tonight. Non-verbally things with no words. Can you get everybody? That's good, see how that could work? As a performing artist and personally a dance background, I believe in the power of non-verbal communication. We actually do it all the time, we just don't pay a lot of attention to it. I also want to thank the translators that are here tonight to help us. Because language, and actually the dog that's here tonight, thank you, everybody here. But we don't want language to create separation because we want to be able to share in all of our abilities to come together. So a little bit of what we're gonna do tonight is bring some people that you may know, that you have had some exchange with on a daily basis or off and on, to model for you how these conversations might go. Definitely in a small room, definitely not on a stage. And to have the ability to move around, to connect in different ways other than just talking at each other. Because we're learning how to listen. There's a...
I did not do that.
That wasn't me. That was you. Did I do something to make that happen? No, okay, it's your fault. So, let me see, okay. I wanted to start out with a few things, so I'm gonna bring you guys up in just a second. But could I have the first slide of some shared values that I want us to start out with, understanding? So, our work is for the common good. In other words, we all have something to gain by doing this work together. We have nothing to lose. There's nothing that is gonna be taken away from us, but we have everything to gain and I can't emphasize it enough. The richer we are, the more diverse we are, the more we understand each other, the deeper our relationships, the more we all have to gain. And relationships are the route to building community. And in today's world, I feel like we don't have enough of that happening. We're separated by a lot of different things, by our time, our commitments, by even social media where we think we're connecting. It's different when you're looking at a person in the face and in their eyes and spending time with them. And so I'd like to introduce this group tonight to come on and join me, if you will. They are a group of diverse people, some of them I've met before at the gathering that we had at the library. No, you get these chairs, yeah, you get straight out in front. This is a little bit of a challenge, but we're... So this original concept, actually, maybe we could just move these chairs. Oh, we want to see, yeah, here, okay. We have, we might have a couple of people joining us.
If you tried to use the URL of the app, it wasn't starting, it's going out.
Welcome, everybody. We're not in a circle, we're in a circle and nobody's looking at us. Okay, is that good? So I'm hoping that everybody can hear everyone, because you guys weren't mine. Do I go up close to them or do I give you this mic?
There's a mic back here.
Oh, there's mics back there, okay. So what I would like to do is just ask them to introduce yourself and let us know where you're born. Wait, he started, no. Or you started. Are you ready?
My name's Paul Peterson, I was born in Port Angeles, Washington.
I'm Melissa McGowan and I was born in Richland, Washington.
Mike Ashton, born in Palo Alto, California.
Sarah White, born in Orange, California.
Hillary Dumitrescu, born in Taipei, Taiwan.
Paul Scoville, born in Hemet, California.
L.B. Clay R. Sutton, born in Oregon City and brought home to Silverton.
Did you guys know that?
They were.
Who was born in Silverton?
I was brought home from the hospital to Silverton.
Okay. How many of you were born in Silverton? There's so many. How many, where are you from? California, in California? Okay, I know you don't want to admit it, but who was born in California? There you have it, okay. Who was born in Washington? How about west of Mississippi? How about east of Mississippi? How many of you aren't sure? They told you one story and then they changed. It's, it's always interesting to me, oh, where do you think I was born?
Hawaii.
Hawaii. Maryland. Japan. California. Huh? Chile. Ooh, I wish I was. So I was born in Des Moines, Iowa. I was born in the Midwest. And that was actually as a result. Come on up, here's a chair, wait. And so we just went down the road. Hi, how are you doing? And said our name and where we're born.
I'm Rhonda Bossdick. I was born in Trinidad, or the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago. We are seven miles off the northwest coast of Venezuela. So that's...
That's a very good way for it. A way from here. Just a few miles, just a few miles. Actually, I did not ask that. Who was born in another country? Cyber. So just a little bit about my story, why this place was born in Des Moines, Iowa, is that my parents were incarcerated during World War II in Parker, Arizona, and my mother was a nurse and found a job in Des Moines, Iowa. And it was a longer story than that, but you had to have a job to be able to leave. And so that's why I was born in Des Moines, Iowa. So I'd like to ask you, and you're listening to these questions because you're gonna have a chance to share with each other too, some of this information. I'd like to know how long you've lived in Silverton and what you really love about Silverton, like, enjoy, value about living in Silverton.
Okay, since I have the mic. I, I first came here following my sister. And Silverton reminded me of the town I grew up in. The, in the summer, we all see those little kids coming from that way and they were always wet. Unaccompanied and wet. And it was just this gaggle of kids and they're having a good time. Everybody's about, just about 12. And I remember, that's how we were. We were a gaggle of kids, no parents, just in everybody's yard, under everybody's tree. Everybody knew us and it was like, it's time to go home now. But you know, whatever we were, we were together. And that reminded, that's what I appreciated about.
Great, thank you.
I've been in Silverton my entire life. What I love most about Silverton is the connections that I've made and the, yeah, I guess the connections that I've made with everyone I can look down the line and know that I know everyone, so that's what I want for my son.
We moved here from Onsville when I was 12. And I love the fact that I can go to John's and he knows exactly how I cut my hair without having to say anything. Or you can go somewhere and someone knows what kind of coffee you drink or what food you like and you don't have to say anything except good morning, good afternoon. I really like that small town kind of thing.
I've lived here for five years and my husband and I run our business from our home, so we could live pretty much anywhere. And we decided to start looking for the perfect place. And we ended up in Silverton on a first Friday. And it was one of those first Fridays in like February or March where it was actually warm enough that people were like wearing shorts in like February. And like Rhonda, I could not believe how many kids were just out running around town and going in and out of stores and, and I just thought, oh my gosh, this is, this is what I want for my babies. And they've had it. I feel like everybody knows my kids, they've always got eyes on them and we just feel welcome wherever we go.
I moved to Silverton about seven years ago with my family after wanting to live in this community since I was a teenager. I was drawn to Silverton because it's beautiful and it's connected and the sense of place and rootedness in this community is so powerful and unlike anything I've experienced in this country. Because people are good to each other, they see each other and take the time to know each other and that's just something special that you don't find in our unrooted society very much anymore.
Likewise. I came here when I was 66, I'm 68 now, so I've only been here two years. But we came here because I do a lot of weddings down in this area when I was in Portland. And this is where we felt peace, not just in Parkland, but when we came here, it just felt, had that feeling when you walk into a building and has that really sweet mojo. That's how the city, we came down here and that afternoon bought a house. We weren't planning to live here, we just came here to do a day of rest. But for us, it's, in just this little time, our house always has people in it, dropping things off almost every day, groups, large groups and small groups. I can honestly say that I've never seen a community that from top to bottom works so hard to help each other out. If you said you needed something in this town, Facebook or somewhere else, you're gonna be crushed with what you need. And I just love that.
I think everybody's given an answer I would have given as well. So I've been in Silverton for 35 years. I was adopted at the age of five by a lovely couple that lived out here in Silverton and moved out to Silverton when the rest of their family lived in Washington because they loved Silverton so much. And like so many other kids, I grew up here and literally went to high school here. I left for a while. I lived in Europe for a while, not in a fun way, like on a military base way, but lived in California again, not in a fun way, out in the middle of the desert. And when I had kids and I had the opportunity to get back, I did so as soon as I possibly could. And you know, I actually grew up in, it was called the boonies, but really stuck out on Meridian and Farmland Ridge. And I, I didn't actually have the same kind of connections growing up as I do now. And I knew, you know, I knew the kids in high school and I took gymnastics where your break is and did all that other stuff that a lot of other people in Silverton are familiar with, but we lived out in the country and I couldn't just walk to somebody's house and play with them. So that was something I missed out when I was younger, but when I came back to Silverton, it's all of what these people have said, the connection, the community, knowing that if my kid walks down the street, I can go give Heather a call at the plant shop and be like, hey, did you see my kid today? Because like they're totally not supposed to be over there. And anybody can do that, anybody can attest to that, that we can all do that. And it wasn't until though, until I got older and I got to see what the adults were doing in Silverton that really made a big impact for me.
Work brought me to Silverton. I've been here for about 14 weeks and that's really only during the week because I'm living in my trailer at the Silver Spur during the weekend and I go home to my house and my family is in Scampus. But I have to say that I have just so much gratitude. We have amazing young people in our schools. And if I had about 20 minutes, I would go into a spiel I like to give about kids these days because they truly are amazing people and in fact many ways better than we were when we were that age. So I'm full of gratitude for our kids. We have incredibly talented, compassionate, dedicated teachers all throughout our district. We've got exceptionally skilled and hardworking administrators throughout our district. We've got a dedicated school board. And I guess I just have to say that I am really grateful about Silverton right now because we have legislation that our state passed where equity is at the center of that legislation. And now I find myself in a community where there's courageous city leadership, ready to help lead not only our school community, but our broader community. It's a very, very important work and so I'm full of gratitude.
I would like all of you now to look around the room and you may be by people that you're, that you know well. And this is, this is why we're asking you to kind of calm down a little bit, but you can move around the room for a moment. And I just want to say, this discussion that we're having, this exchange, is gonna go till maybe about eight, eight-ten in total. is going to go till maybe about eight, eight-ten in total. This total, we're not done yet. And then it will go right into your regular town hall meeting, which I think Kyle explained. I just want to emphasize that again. So what you just heard, these citizens of your city do, they introduce themselves except for, I'm sorry. Okay, we missed, we missed. So we'll model this, okay. So your name?
I'm Simone.
You're going to say it to everyone, everybody?
I'm Simone.
And where you were born?
I was born in Trinidad in the west of East Orange.
And what do you love about Silverton?
I love being close to nature, that is one of my dreams.
Great, okay. So now you all are going to get about maybe, okay, seven minutes. All right, to get with someone, to talk to them about who you are, how long you've been here and what you love about Silverton. Okay, so I'm going to turn my back to you while you guys do that and then I'm going to set these guys up. So I've asked people on the stage to form two circles. And you know, there's something really magical and wonderful about gathering in a circle. All of our indigenous cultures know that, have done that, have taught us that, have come together in that way, in the power of circle. And so they don't need to be rude by having their back to you, but it's going to facilitate their ability to exchange with each other in the circle. And now what I've asked them to consider is, oh, and can I have the next, the next slide? So I said this earlier, but I want to emphasize this, that we're not going to end tonight like, oh, gosh, that's, yeah, we got that all figured out. Or we're investing in this project, in this process and we know what to do now. This is a process, thank you very much. You taught us that last time. This is a process of getting to know each other, of building relationships, of coming together. And so we're investing in that process. Everybody that's in this room and the people that you go home to talk to, the people in your family that you share this with, we're all engaged in a living process. And so could you change to the next slide please? So there's three things that I consider agreements. And those are that you're going to really try hard to listen without judgment. Because usually when somebody's talking, we're going through our, you know, how we're thinking about it, what we want to say and how we're going to respond after that person finishes talking. You don't need to do that because we're just going to listen and try our best to listen without judgment. And always speak from my personal truth. This is what I understand, from my experience, from my knowing. It helps in the conversation of speaking from your own truth. But someone can disagree with you and/or have a different reality. And that's okay. They can have their reality and their truth and you can have your reality and your truth and the two can exist together. It's not a race to win who's right and who's wrong. It's not an either or. It's not even an and-but or but-and. It just is. But I want to introduce that idea that two realities can exist by power at the same time. You don't have to compete. And so I've asked our circles to talk about what was it like culturally? How did you exchange with other cultures when you were growing up? And where you were growing up? And by other cultures, I want to clarify that to mean people who are not like you or that you consider not like you. By other cultures, I don't mean foreign, from another place. They're just different than what you know or what you know, what you do, okay? So can I ask this group to just start? You okay? You guys mind? So they're going to have, don't worry about turning your back to them, you're fine. They're going to hear you.
So from Trinidad, do you hear that?
Yeah, I hear you.
Is this one hot? This mic is not on. It's green? No? We're having a mic issue down here. They're on it. Well, actually, in this moment, you could talk like that, same thing. How was it for you growing up? Where you were born? Okay, so in the booth, we have no mics down here. Our hand mic. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so when we think about it, in Trinidad, we didn't have much people who were considered others because we were all, most families were mixed. And we basically celebrated everything. So everybody celebrated Diwali, everyone celebrated Yen, everyone celebrated everything with everybody. So I still have my sarah, I just haven't gotten a chance to wear it yet in Silverton. But we didn't really consider people other. Like everyone participates in driving road races on Chinese Survivor Day because we didn't really consider people other. That's a different question for us. Because we were brought up to jumping. If I went to a home where people ate on the mannequins with their fingers and saw it on the floor, that's what I did. And if you went to the presidential palace, you ate like you were in the presidential palace. So you just were whatever you were, where you were, whatever you were.
So these smaller circles, in the works, sometimes I call it a cafe. And we're just sitting around having a cup of coffee or tea and having a conversation. I'm going to ask you to try to keep them really kind of short so that we can get to the next round. So that was fantastic, if that worked out. So let's just stick with this circle for a moment and then next time maybe we'll go back. So you guys are actually talking to each other. Yeah?
Okay, well, for me culturally, growing up was, I think, pretty easy. It was hard in a lot of other aspects, but culturally I felt, I don't know, we would go to, I grew up Catholic, so we'd go to church and we'd hang out. We'd be there early to sit up and then afterwards, we would sit and eat lunch and have choco meat and everything with our family and with other friends. And that's kind of where we would hear about like the town news or what was, who's Gensera was coming up. So that was kind of where I connected with my Hispanic culture. And then other than that, at school, I would go to school and I would, I guess, I guess, they call it code switching, but it's almost like you go to school and not a lot of teachers spoke Spanish, so we weren't necessarily, it was kind of frowned upon to speak Spanish. So we, I spoke English and I dropped my accent very young. And so I, my whole house had, my household had an accent. My mom still carries a very thick accent. You should meet her, she's really awesome. But so culturally, it was kind of this whole, you know, when you're at home, with your aunts and uncles, everything, you are this. And then when you're at school or in public places, you're like this. So I guess culturally, I didn't realize how psychologically messed up that kind of it was. But it's kind of more accepted, I guess. So that was, that was my experience growing up.
My experience growing up was around other people that looked like me. Biggest cultural differences were who was dirt poor and who wasn't. We were dirt poor and a lot of siblings. But my mom one day said to me, I don't know why, but I think you're going to have a colorful family. And I took that at a young age and then sought out diversity. I looked for it. I tried to be friends with anybody who didn't look like me at school. And I went to high school in the nineties, so there wasn't a lot. And when they did come, they only stayed a few months. I understand now why. So everybody looked like me, but I was dying for somebody different.
I grew up the youngest of eight kids, so that was my first culture. And we were military brats, so we had the attitude of sort of like, if you're a human being and you're next to me, you're a friend. Because I can't be picky because we might move next month, you know? And I grew up in a military town with a lot of kids that were like that too. So I feel really gifted to have grown up kind of like Simone said, just like, yeah, cool, what's your story? Like I just, I approached most people with just an innate curiosity and I kind of figured they're going to be good guys once I get to know them. And I haven't been proven wrong too many times.
Great, thank you to this group here. And then now you're in a cafe over there.
Go ahead.
Had a, we're trying to try that.
Yes.
Switch into talking mode. So I said before, I was adopted at five. And for me, when you don't stay in your original family, there's a kind of overwhelming sense of not feeling like you belong. And I, my sister and I were adopted together, so we were really lucky and fortunate in that. But we were both very artistic and very emotional and very sensitive, very talkative. And my parents were not. My dad's a computer programmer and my mom is a very sweet woman that makes really good pies and doesn't, didn't have any idea what to do with us. So, and my genetic background is part Native American in the kind of southern areas of like where Texas is now. And Irish, again, ducative. Ew. But so, and when I was younger, I was actually, my skin was kind of a bit darker probably because I actually stayed outside more instead of, you know, turning white and inside under a computer. But, and so I do remember at a really young age kind of being singled out. In my, I was in a very small school and I wasn't that dark, but I had dark hair and my skin was a little bit darker. And I remember, I remember somebody calling me a vino when I was younger and me like, what is that? And, but as I got older and I got paler, what I, what kind of stuck out for me wasn't necessarily where people were in the skin tone. It was like there was all these kids that kind of were the misfits that tended to group together. And maybe we had something in our childhood that kind of made us a little different. Or maybe I had a friend that had Tourette's and just, he was the nicest kid, but he just tended to turn people off. Or there was just a big group of us like that where we kind of all banded together in our differentness. And so I think that's just kind of the mode that I operated out of was, well, we're all kind of weird and we're all kind of different and so it couldn't be worse than this, right? So it's welcome. So I think that shaped a lot of how I approach people now. Where I don't know where they're coming from or where they're going necessarily, but I do know what it feels like to not fit in. And so I just try in my best not to make sure I do that to anyone else.
So my experience growing up in Northwest Washington, my cultural experience was definitely a community that looked like me, but there was a reservation adjacent to our community. And so while we had friends who lived on the reservation that were our friends at school, there was definitely a sufferingness there. And I remember not understanding why I didn't go to their houses just go to find and play back to it.
Palo Alto across the street from Stanford University was totally white. A lot of nice houses. I didn't know how poor we were, how much violence was in my house until a little later. And all the kids that I played with looked like me and I thought they were all living in houses like the house I lived in. It wasn't until I got into junior high and high school that I started to meet people who were really different from me. Somehow, my violent house where I couldn't wait to get out of it, helped me to go out into the world where there were so many other people. And I have no idea why I felt comfortable doing that. Because some of the words that I associate with different kinds of people, I can still hear. And, but they're never something that I go to. Instead, I kind of search out something different. I'm not sure why that. So my cultural training was incorrect.
Well, mine was just as incorrect as yours. Because if you get my family together, if you get my great family together and you put them all up on the stage, you kind of look like this, right? In fact, you found out when we were about twelve that our great grandfather was Croatian. Twisted by the story behind that, but, but we, but Trinidad is multicultural. We were multicultural. I remember waking up one morning and standing out on the balcony and the neighbor next door is blasting Maria Makiva. And the, on the other side, the other, the Indian neighbors would get together, they would play.
What's the name song, did they become just like Lata?
Lata Maschinger, she's a classical Indian and it's Indian singer. And it's like, okay, we could listen from Trump's from the cockoo to Chai Kof. And it was all tied right there in this little place that I called home. I didn't, I didn't know that, that people will not, this wasn't it. And I think maybe I was fortunate in that fact, that I meet people and I see a face and it's a face of a human being and I expect to find that human harmony.
I guess culturally, I identify probably most with poverty and dysfunction. I grew up kind of feral in the orange groves and the sagebrush of San Diego County, rural San Diego County, surrounded by immigrants from Mexico, Latin America and Native American reservation and a lot of wealthy white people with horses. And I was a poor kid and I grew up in a household with violence and felt sort of untethered to any place as my family had to move and relocate in response to family violence and poverty. And I think my sense of identity was with people who struggled, I suppose. And people who don't feel belonging and feel a sense of fitting in. I grew up in heavily religious communities as well from time to time and didn't fit there very well. And I think I always had this sense of vigilance about the feeling of belonging that the people around me have and the feeling of safety that the people around me have. And it's probably hyper vigilance from trauma, but. but that was kind of my awareness and where my radar was tuned.
Great. So I would like to ask you now to challenge yourself to maybe get with some different people that you don't know. Introduce yourself and then have this conversation about how it was for you growing up. So, go. It's great to talk to other people and have the time to do that. I want to ask you in the audience to reflect on this process and toward the end, and we're going to have a little bit more time. Thank you, Zane Palmer. We're going to have a little bit more time to process together tonight. So I may ask if you want to volunteer to share some of your experiences tonight after this next time. So now we're going to talk about how was it for you growing up? And then how is it now for you in Silverton? What have you observed, experienced culturally in Silverton? So let's go back to this group here. Do you have your mic? And I'm going to ask you to keep your individual comments a little bit shorter so that we can have a little bit more time on the audience. They're at the Silverton Cafe. What's your bistro? You're at the bistro.
We're at the bistro. This is a tough question for me, not because I don't want to answer it, but because I don't want to overanswer it. My Silverton story is completely different now. My son's five, he's black, he's African. He's not African-American. In fact, he's Malawian. And I don't really like living in Silverton with him. So my culture is different. When I grew up, the biggest thing that we would get hassled at the grocery store was we were taking too long with our food stamps. I go to store now and I go to Safeway and I'm buying groceries with my son and I get to hear terms like "up" and stuff like that. When I grew up, I didn't have to put up with that. And so Silverton treats me differently. I graduated here, went to school here, I'm a volunteer firefighter. I work at the food bank. I served my community. I was a substitute teacher for a couple of years by choice. But I don't want. Well, that's another story. But I'm seen one way when I'm by myself and I'm seen another way when I'm with my son. And that pisses me off. I'll leave it at that. Sorry.
Well, as a kid, I grew up going to a school where only one teacher who had to say my name, and he is actually in the audience today, Mr. Jenkins. So going from, kind of like I was saying earlier, just having that code switching and really trying to make whoever was around me comfortable, to now I'm kind of having more of a backbone and understanding that "Vina Latina" in Silverton means more than just "Vina Latina." The fact that I don't, the fact that I was born here, the fact that I don't have an accent kind of gives me kind of a hand up. So nowadays, I tend to stand up a little bit more. I speak louder. I don't worry about people's comfort zones so much. And so I've kind of used that as more of a benefit. And now also marrying to my husband, who has no idea what it's like to be anything other than himself. It's helped me practice on him too, so.
My culture hasn't changed a bit because I look like this. And that is the definition of privilege.
For me, I have changed a lot personally because before I came to Silverton, I never was wary about people who didn't look like me. I would avoid changes and then because, actually, I tend to be, I used to feel uncomfortable in any place that was just homophobic. Even if it were, everybody looked like me, I would think that's something as well. I would feel uncomfortable because that's not what I was accustomed to. Now I am always keeping one eye, even when I'm older, because I have experienced violence with my home and accidents myself. So I no longer am open with someone. When I look at, when I look at people now, I don't just see people. I don't just go up to someone and just start talking anymore because I have to check that person out and see, okay, do I get it? And what vibes do I get coming off of them? So I think, I feel like I've lost my sense of self, so. I'm a lot more, I would say, more, because I am in a place where I am in the scoops. And I now am in the scoops for a reason because there are kids in there who look like me who do not have a voice. So I am very outspoken. I am more, not that I'm brave, because I'm a quaking inside when I do it, but I am more of a person who would stand up and speak out.
As her sister, I say, "The lady's got affairs." I, when I first came here, I came here with the same metropolitan attitude. I lived in DC, I lived in New York. I lived among white families. I was a nanny. I lived in rich, I lived poor. I lived the whole gamut and felt comfortable everywhere. And when I came here, after, after the rose-colored glasses fell off, I started becoming wary and started giving up that Trinidadian vibe where I talked to anybody, I smiled with anybody. I started looking at people. And I remember one time, nieces and nephews loved Oregon. This is their place to be. They were here and they were abused. One person was, they were showing them at the parade and, "Get out of here, get out of here." And she was to the point of tears. She was like, "Ronda, I don't, I can't stop them." And I said, "Stop." I said, "Stop. You can't judge everyone the same." And we were in the Walmart parking lot and there was this tall, red-haired man. I mean, he looked like, he'd come off of a Viking ship, a huge guy. And I pointed at him and I said, "Do you know him?" And she said, "I don't care." And I said, "Do you know him?" I said, "He might hate every black man as they stand." Or he, or the love of his life might be a black woman. And in that breath, he didn't like so. You know how parents do when they walk across the parking lot and they have a child with them? They just put that hand back to catch that small hand. And a little boy, he had dark skin and that red hair. He grabbed his hand and I said, "There." I said, "You see, you can't judge everybody by what they look like. You can lose yourself." And I refuse to lose myself. That is why I am here. And I am going to be the black person that you want to talk to.
I have Palo Alto. I grew up in a rich area across the street from Stanford. We moved to another very rich area. I didn't know how poor we were, but we did have a lot of violence and all the other kinds of abuse in our house. And all the schools we went to were white. There were, there was nothing else. It wasn't until later that I got really into, well, I would say this, in 40 years of ministry, I've been working in East Palo Alto, East Salinas, East Oakland. You wonder why is it always east? But I realized that it was the richest people, and this was my own stereotype that I grew into, were the people that hid their stuff and it was inaccessible. And then going into the families in Salinas, if I found out that a girl was pregnant, she hadn't told her family yet, I could go to their house and I know that they do. They live in their old house because the minister's coming and they would make tamales. But when we sat down to talk, everybody was in there. Nobody hid and everybody cried. And it was so accessible to me and I did not have, I had no idea that anybody could live that way. And I found that to be more true, maybe of poor people than just people of color, people who are of different races, right? So for me, coming to Silverton, maybe because the people we know are every station in life. And I don't feel as much as hiding here, except Rhonda, what you, what you guys said last time. I was ashamed and scared to be and to not be able to see it and know that it's here. So it's been, that's been a weird cultural thing for me, starting when we heard that.
The question is about the culture of today. And in my work, where I spend almost all my waking hours is in multiple communities, I hear in Silverton and then also in our, because the school district covers 250 square miles of multiple rural communities as well. So I think an interesting aspect in terms of the culture today is that we're talking now. And we're talking about equity and diversity and inclusion. And for me, not everyone is ready to engage in that conversation. And when those of us try to initiate conversations, we find that we need help and we go to the people who we know, like Rhonda. And then there's always a question of, is it fair to keep asking Rhonda to be the spokesperson for black people in Silverton? And so, and she said, "Yes, thank goodness," right? But not everybody feels that way. And so the culture of the moment for me is try to be a part of helping lead the work, recognizing that I am a white person and I need help. But how do I do so and encourage other voices in a sensitive way?
So I think one of the largest things that have changed for me is the inclusion of a vocabulary around LGBTQ plus. So growing up, how many of you remember hearing the awful story about Matthew Shepard? That was the first time I heard somebody was gay and somebody got hurt because they were gay, just for the sole reason of being gay. And as a mom, I ended up with the child that came out. And that changed my culture personally because I had to learn what that meant. I had to learn what that meant for them. I had to learn what it meant, the terminologies, which change and grow by the day. I had to learn what that meant for them. I had to learn what it meant for people in the community. And what I learned was, it's still a conversation we're pretty uncomfortable with. There's a lot more kids now that are, they're acting more openly, comfortable around their same-sex relationships. But, and for reference, I started the Silverton Rainbow Connection and based off of the fact that I had a child that had come out. And my first thought, as most kids, parents do, is how do I protect my kid? How do I make sure that my kid didn't just tell me, "I have a target on my back. I'm going to go outside, I'm going to walk around and someone's going to find me and they're going to target me." And so I felt that the only thing that can really keep that fear at bay is to be an activist. It's to go out and to say, "Okay, you guys need to learn about this stuff." Or you need to, you need to talk about this. Or your kids, I don't know if you realize how many of your kids are not sharing with you that they feel like they could be transgender or they feel like they are attracted to the same sex or they don't really know what they're attracted to, but that's not a conversation they feel comfortable having with you. And it is only through that work that I really realized where we're at and how far we have to go. But even last year, we did a book reading at the library, the first book reading for the first LGBT positive group Silverton's probably ever had. And I think there were maybe 10 of us and it was like the same 10 people that came to every other meeting. But one of the gals in the room, you know, she came up to me afterwards and she was crying. She's like, "I can't believe we did this." Like, we all sat here and we read these books. And she was eight at the time, wanted to read a book. And she got up and read and she's the most out kids you will ever meet. She's like, "Hi, I'm not, I'm not binary." We had a conversation a week ago and she told she was a lesbian. And she's like, "I love this lesbian talk." That's my nine-year-old. So you can have like a really positive experience with your kids, no matter where they're at. And there's part of me that wants to be like, "Tone it down a little. We're still working on the bigger community." But that's what we're all, I think we're all here for reasons like that. We want to try to educate the community because there's somebody we love. There's somebody we love that is a different color and we're tired and sick and tired of getting that, making that a target for them. Or because we grew up poor and we know what that feels like. When you said something about the food stamps, that like hit me in the gut. I was a single parent for so many years and that shame that comes from that, it just, oh, it just hit me, like almost, I think, almost everybody of us that are up here on this panel could probably say that about their upbringing. Like, I just didn't want them to feel that way anymore. And my God, we're not going to, you know, we're going to change it. So I think that's for me, one of the biggest changes.
I would say that for me, the change was coming to a place where I felt like I had a place and being safe enough and raising children who are safe enough to know their privilege and to leverage their privilege to advocate for other people. And I'm raising these fierce, courageous children who are provoking things. And I'm really sometimes astonished by what they provoke. It's not always pretty. And I think when we advocate for people who struggle, we see, we step out and take some blows for the community. Because when we advocate for people who are poor and homeless and people of color and members of the LGBTQ plus community and undocumented immigrants and people who have a past and who are known in our small town for their past, you step out and you advocate for those people and you see what they, what they experience. And it's powerful and it's overwhelming and it's why we're having this conversation tonight, because we have leaders who listen. Not every community has leaders who listen and who are accessible and who help facilitate the conversation that we need to have because those people sometimes can't stand in a place of strength because their lives are so hard and their challenges are so hard. And then we have brave people who are willing to step up and carry that burden to speak for their community and speak their experience because they have this tremendous capacity. And I think it's up to all of us to watch people carry that really big burden of speaking for people who struggle. And I think it's up to all of us to watch people carry that really big burden of speaking for people who struggle and watch them with awe and astonishment and support them and to say, like, some amazing young people that I got to talk to earlier tonight, to say, you have the courage and the capacity to do this heavy work. And your community's behind you, but we really have to, we have to show up and mean that we're behind people.
Thank you very much for sharing this. So this word of intersectionality has been used more and more recently. It basically means we can be all that. And we need to learn how to define ourselves in all ways that we are, not just one way. And yet, for people of color, there is this continued code-switching. That's another term that you may hear, allyship. But the bottom line is, we all have emotional legacies. We all bring to the table, to the discussion, to our going to the store, to our teaching our children, our own emotional legacies. And the more that we can share those stories, I think it's, it's, there's a power in story that helps us to be authentic and transparent. But also, sometimes we can buy our own story too much, to the point of not listening to the other stories. And so I'm gonna go back to, it's, it's a process, and it's an ongoing process. And I understand that within your city, within your leadership organizationally, and as you individually meet head-on some of the issues that arise for you personally and within your, within your city. If you continue to engage, you will find the answers. And I guess when I'm listening to this wonderful panel, I'm also reflecting on the fact that I've just had a grandchild. And thinking about, Kaliope Bron is a poet. I always want to turn to poets to help us make some sense. And while, you know, generations may not understand that the world is changing, what he said is that, you know, my children are not my children. They are of a world that I will never know. So we can try to change everything, you know, while we're here. But some of us aren't gonna be here when the changes happen. We can facilitate that along the way. So I'd like to close out tonight by asking you all to return to your nice little horseshoe shape so everyone can see you and revel in your selfness. And I'd like to just ask maybe two people if they have something that they would like to share as an audience member. Oh, we did do that meeting, Paulson. Oh, you're gonna do that, okay. So you're gonna have a way to share out that's not really putting you on the mic? But if there's anybody that would like to share something, maybe as we go along into the evening and close out, or have some burning question or burning thing that you want to say, we want to hear that as we continue on in the process of going forward. So I want to sign off my part now and thank all of you for coming and let you know that this process will continue on. And thank everybody on the stage for their wonderful, authentic, honest sharing. And that's really, really rich. That is our, our goal here, that we can do that with each other. And you're in a place where institutionally and individually, we can make those changes. Or we can acknowledge what's working. So thank you very much. And can we have another panel? And I believe we're going to transition Mayor Palmer by exiting this group and inviting the board members to join us? So can we do that, please? And so the board members can come up here and, do you need to? Yeah. And then the board members can come up and you may have other questions that are unrelated to this discussion.
Who's our, now we're done, now we're hot, great. So thank you so much to our panelists. I really appreciate your time tonight. I know the audience appreciated hearing from you. And I want to welcome the city council and the school board to the stage. And just, I'm gonna pass down the microphone. I know the city council has these fancy name tags, but want to make sure everybody has a chance to introduce themselves. We'll start with.
I'm Matt Plummer, city councillor. Jonathan Edmonds, school board member.
Jennifer Traeger, school board member.
Dana Smith, city council.
Shelley Nealon, school board member.
Jason Frowley, your city council.
Tom Boogal, school board member.
Jim Seier, city council.
Janet Allen, ex-school board member.
Crystal Knight, city council.
Lori Flattman, school board member.
Thank you all. So this is the part of the night, this is a town hall. We do this periodically. And so we sort of set aside this part of the evening to be able to address any questions you might have. Does not have to be related to this topic at all. If you have no questions, then we'll sort of let the, these folks sort of reflect on what they heard. And they may have things to say. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question to the school board and the city council about this topic we're hearing tonight or about anything on your mind? Because we do want to fulfill our, our responsibility to the public to allow this open forum. Anybody at all? We have two microphones here. Come on up. See if they're on.
Hi, I do have a question, and it has nothing to do with what we just experienced. My question is, does the city have a plan? And what I mean by that is I'm seeing a lot of building going on, housing. Or, I'm not saying that it's bad. I'm very neutral about this. I just see a lot of building going on. And I don't know that the city has the infrastructure to support that, and maybe it does. So I'm just wondering if there's a plan.
That's a great question, Paul, thanks. So, yeah, we are seeing a lot of building. A lot of it was property that was put in place years and years ago into the city and is now developing because we're in a healthy environment, economy-wise. And there have been some laws that have changed at the state level that have made it really a great environment for development. So, yeah, we are seeing a lot more development. There really wasn't any through the period of the economy that we, that we all lived through. So in terms of infrastructure, we've talked a lot about that over the years, about how we have aging infrastructure. A lot of that refers to pipes that are in the ground that are just old. They've been there a long time and are gonna need to be replaced. But certainly, we do have some vital systems in our community, the sewer system, the water system, that we have to be cognizant of how many citizens that we can serve. And so that's a priority of the city council. And I'll pass this on to let them weigh in, too. It's something we talk about constantly. Lately, there have been some denials on our part of some development. Simultaneously, however, we have an affordable housing, affordable housing task force, which is sort of aggressively working on ways we can tinker with our code to make it possible to provide some of the middle housing that's missing in Silverton. So we have a lot of single-family residents, a disproportionate amount of those kind of residences. And we are aware that we're getting very close, if we're not already there, to an environment where the elderly part of our community can't afford to stay here, which is not something we want. They're, they have a ton of wisdom, they're a volunteer army, and they're people that we don't want to lose from our community. Additionally, the young adults who are entering their, their early adulthood and careers, many of them can't afford to live here either. And so that part of our demographic is something that's on our mind. Nobody has the answer yet, but I think some people on the panel may have something they want to say about it. Anybody, the questions for the council, anybody want to raise their hand? Matt, you have a mic, is it working?
Is it? Yep, all right. So I just want to make sure that people understand that a lot of the decisions that we're faced with, it's not a like or dislike sort of decision. That there are standards that were held to in a lot of these. And, you know, some of these things might not taste very well, but we still need to swallow them and deal with them. I think we're making adjustments so that there is more logic and reasoning involved in how we grow and just how we approach growth. But as Merrill noted, too, a lot of the things that are happening now were kind of set in motion years ago. And so there's very little that we can do now. But as he also mentioned, we are slowing things down. And we have denied some annexations recently. We have, you know, unfortunately, we denied one big project that came back and bit us. And we learned from that, made some adjustments. So we are listening, but there's only so much that we can do with, with some of these projects and some of these developments.
So the, the question about infrastructure as it relates to growth, there is a perception, I think, that all of the growth is what is causing our infrastructure to fail. And that's not necessarily true. It's a lack of maintenance and keeping up with, with that over the years. And it would have, the pipes in the ground are failing because there are more people using water and sewer. They're failing because they're old. And those needed to be replaced regardless of how many people live here. Frankly, it makes it easier to replace them with more people. The lightning might strike there per se. The, the expanding our sewer treatment plant and our water treatment plant, that is possible because we have new people that are building. And part of the fees that are associated with new building are system development charges. And so people who build are assessing these other fees that kind of, that are designed to facilitate the incremental growth that they are caused, the need that they are causing. So you say, all right, we're gonna have this many more people moving to town, and this is gonna require this much more treatment capacity. So this is how much, and we know it's gonna cost this much. So for everything, every new dwelling, we're going to charge this much. And so that, that perception that the growth is causing the infrastructure to fail, I just wanted to kind of address that. And that when we grow, we are collecting money so that we can expand those systems. But we still need to repair the stuff that's already here.
Anybody else in the council have anything they want to add to that? See if that was working.
So anybody who knows me knows that this is a topic that I could literally talk for hours about. And it's, so for that reason, this is really hard for me to talk about because I got a soundbite to talk about it. So I'm just, I'm gonna talk about it, about what I see from a high level. And Silverton has infrastructure problems. Silverton is also a very expensive place to live. And, you know, I grew up here. I made a sincere effort to raise my family here and call this my home. I, I tell people, I want to live, work, and play in Silverton. My whole life is in Silverton. And when I came back a few years ago, I came back and I was like, oh, I'm gonna go back home. And it's like Lake Caspico, it's lovely, it's great. Got nice houses, it's great standard of living, all that. But I've changed since then, and I have a much more different perspective. Some of you may know that I owned a shop here in town for seven years. I interacted with a lot of youth in this community. And I know dozens, if not hundreds, of young people in this community that want to stay, but they can't afford to live here. And it has made a huge, tremendous perspective change for myself. I will admit, I'm biased. I have a daughter that's one of those people. And I don't want Silverton to be in the leftist community. Growth can sometimes pay for itself. Sometimes it doesn't. And sometimes, I think maybe me and Dan sometimes disagree on that a little bit, about just how far that goes. But the reality is, in the state of Oregon, if we try to turn off the valve and say, no more people in Silverton, they will force us to do so, just like they did on the north end of town. And they completely have the legal right to do that. So for me, it's about thinking smart. It's about what do we want to have happen? And can we control it so it's not more than we can handle and still keep our small-town feeling? And I want to see us focus on affordable houses for people in our community. And I hope some people aren't offended by this. I used to live in one of them. But I don't want to see any more mansions in Silverton. And I think we do have that, and we don't need any more of that. The ones that are here, great, you're welcome to stay. But I think we need to do more affordable housing, and yeah, that's gonna be growth. As far as our infrastructure, it's behind. It is behind. And what Tua Dano was saying, it has to be replaced anyways. We could grow, we could stop growing completely. We still have to pay out millions of dollars to replace it. And we have these large tracts of land that were annexed into the city in the nineties. And in the early 2000s. And those are already pre-approved. There's nothing we can do to stop them. They've just been waiting for the economy to turn around, to blow up. But we can't say, no more huge annexations, which is where I'm at. But I also don't feel, I'm hearing I'm talking way too much. I also don't feel that our neighbors, when I say neighbors, I mean the small landowners that happen to live right next door to us and have an acre or two. And their well has failed, their septic system has failed. And the county says, well, you're out of luck, you got annexed into the city. I consider them part of our community. I don't stop at the city's boundaries to think this is Silverton. And we owe it to them to welcome them into our community if they want to join us. I know, by the way, they're gonna pay us a ton of taxes to join into the city. It might help us pay for our infrastructure. So I talked way too much.
Anybody else on the council that needs to add anything? Are there any questions? Anybody else? We're working. There's a lot of.
There are several. Yes, there are, we have a wastewater treatment plan, master plan. We have a water treatment master plan. We have. We have transportation master plan. So we have plans for all of these different systems. But there, it's a process, getting the funding in place to carry those plans out and doing it in a methodical, strategic sequence. So yes, there are multiple plans, and we are constantly updating them.
It's a complicated answer, but yes, there are plans. That's what I'm going to come to the microphone.
Yes, there is a plan. It's called the comprehensive plan, required to plan 20 years out. Everybody up there knows that. So my wish is that everybody would know the rules, and then everybody plays by the rules, and then sell you out as smart people. My question is, what opportunities for equity and inclusion exist right now, sitting right where you are, that can be worked toward or implemented?
Anyone from the school board want to answer that first? Yeah. You got a mic from Scott down there?
So, one of the important things that we're doing as a school district is reaching out to groups that haven't traditionally been invited to talk about things that impact all of our students. And we have a really great opportunity through the Student Success Act to reach out to different groups that, again, aren't usually at the table. Our superintendent told me just this weekend about efforts to reach out to LGBTQT+ community, to Hispanic community, and I think the other group were people with different abilities, or students with different abilities. So that is work that is required for us to get an additional $2 million per year from the state. And it's a nice, it's a nice way to bring people in that haven't been represented, to be able to hear from them and to know a different perspective, so that those perspectives can be included in plans moving forward.
Yeah, we have a meeting the first Monday of every month where we listen. And so it gives everybody an equal shot to come forward with whatever is important to them, whatever plan they have, whatever gripes they have. So you know, if you've attended one of our meetings, you'll realize that few take advantage of that opportunity. So it is there, every single meeting that we have, and we are always excited when folks have something to come forward. And I would say one of the bigger projects or plans that has come forward started because of just that. There was a group of folks that really cared about energy and climate, and came to the city, and worked with us, worked with some of our utility companies, and a plan came together, they presented it, and we liked it an awful lot, and that's the direction we're going. So hopefully, we'll see a lot more of that.
I don't want to speak for the principal of our high school or for the folks who are involved in this, but I do know that Wade Lockett has convened an equity group at the high school that's made up of some community members and, most importantly, students. And they're doing some important work around conversations about what it means to be inclusive and what issues the high schools have experienced in the past, and how they can move forward really positively. And I really feel like the schools are one of the most important places that we can start this conversation and empowering our young people to be able to speak their truth without fear, and to be able to work together collaboratively as a community in their own right, just as we saw earlier on the stage, I think is critical. So I think we can really use that as a model moving forward, even in our younger grades, you know, with the middle school and then in our elementary schools in an age-appropriate way. So that's really exciting, and I just wanted to commend Principal Lockett and his team for that work.
Your mic, Michelle.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Janet said. The other thing that the school district or that our interim superintendent has re-implemented is a district-wide equity committee. And this is just not a committee that's going to be, you know, looking at things, write a policy, and done in six months. This is going, this is an intensive process that these educators, teachers, community members are involved in. And eventually, we're going to have some kind of policy in our district, I think. But I think the most important situation with this is the conversation, and the conversations that are going to be happening with the committee. So this is a district-wide one, high school one, and district-wide. So I think I can safely say for myself that we are, you know, I'm very committed to this type of work, and it is never-ending. It's never-ending. It's a long process, and it's a marathon and not a sprint. And we have to work together for it, so.
I'd say from the city standpoint, our city staff has an equity program that they're working on, which is great at the organized staff level. I spend a lot of my time thinking about why we all look the same on the council, why our committees, many of them, all look the same. And I do think it's our responsibility to go out and reach out to other groups in the community, make sure they know that they're welcome to apply. We don't have a quota system. I want the best candidate, but I know we're not even seeing the best candidate sometimes because they don't feel welcome to come apply or be part of the conversation. So I would agree, Michelle, just talking about this is a really good first step, getting the word out there that, you know, we all want these things, we share this, you all want them, or you wouldn't be here tonight. And I, but I think that there is a commitment work upon us to go out and convince some groups that have been disenfranchised that we want them to be part of this process. And I'm not just talking about people of color, people with disabilities, people in our town that are on a different socioeconomic scale, that feel like there's an elitist group running our community. We sure don't feel like that. None of us are rich or any otherwise. But I know that perspective is out there, and I don't think it's reasonable for us to just sit back and say, well, you're wrong. I think we need to go out and show those people, all people, that this is a welcoming environment. We have a lot of committees on the city. There's a lot of work that volunteers can do. And certainly, I get a lot of joy out of seeing multiple names on the ballot for our positions. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a great thing when nobody runs for positions. We really want people to be interested in serving, and this is a community of servants. It really is. And so I think it's just important to let everybody know that this door is open, and we want you to walk through it. Anybody else that wants to add to that? Do we have any other questions? Anybody else that, well, I think we got time for one more if we can close it really quickly. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
So I don't know if you can hear me very well, but I'm curious to know what the school board and the city is going to do about the bullying issue that's going on. And I am, my daughter's a victim of it, and I'm also a victim of it. And I also would like to know, because this is also personal to me, what the school board and the city is going to do about saving the employees' rights to losing their jobs for victims, victims of domestic violence, so that they don't lose their jobs in the city of Silverton, because that's happened to me. And so that, these two items are personal to me. And there's also bus issues with students riding in the middle of the buses, on the floor, not having seats. So those are three issues that are going on that, just living here one year, that I've noticed.
The bulk of that, I think, is, well, I appreciate that you asked both entities. You probably know the school board is a separate district, so we don't actually govern together. And a lot of the things you said, I think, are related to student experience, although I would say that what we're here to talk about tonight, I've heard a lot of words, equity, diversity, inclusion, on one side. I've heard a lot of words like racism on the other. Bullying is no less on that list than anything else. We're, it's all bullying of a matter. And it, as a community, we have to learn allyship. Heard that word earlier. We need to model the right behavior, and it needs to become uncomfortable for people to do that. But you're talking about a very complex problem that I think we're just finally starting to talk about in the open. So it's, we have work to do. It sickens me to hear that that happens to our youth. It's not isolated with young people, though. It happens to people of all ages. Anybody want to answer that?
Thank you. I mean, at an individual level, I hope you're elevating your concerns to folks that need to address it. The school board itself isn't obviously going to be the immediate remedy to a discreet incident. As a, as a board, however, we did just adopt a strategic plan that does outline additional points to that, trying to make sure everybody feels welcome in all cases. It's just about racism. It's all racism that you might not feel welcome or might feel bullied. And I think, like I said, a strategic role we are working hard to do that. And we're going to be reviewing that strategic plan based on the experience of our community and the feedback that hopefully is being filtered out through our superintendent. So I hope you are elevating those concerns outside even of this board, because we won't be able to talk today to specific issues as a school board specifically.
So one of the things that was reinforced to me when the cafes were speaking up here was the story that Sarah White was talking about, about children who are in a place where they can't stand up for other children. That's really powerful. And a lot of times bullying or treatments that isn't right happens when teachers aren't around. In fact, it mostly happens when teachers aren't around. And so teachers don't know. So relying on adults to solve those problems is sometimes not super efficient, but we can rely on adults to create systems where students own the culture of their schools, and they may get a place where everybody belongs. And so I think that, I mean, this is my personal viewpoint, and I think that matters, though, in the sense of being an elected official. I think that the school district is making strides to work in that direction, but I would also just underline what Jonathan said, that reach out to your principal. Reach out to your principal and talk to your principal. And our superintendent, Paul Peterson, he's right over there tonight, and he's welcome. He is a very good guy to approach. He's a very approachable guy, so we encourage you to move through those levels.
So just continuing the conversation, I'm going to do another piece of the pie. In the last two years or so, there has been a significant breakthrough in realizing that we need social and emotional health curriculum in our district and in all districts. I just got back from a four-day conference in Portland, and there were many, many sessions on social and emotional learning for students and children. And this incorporates multiple ways of teaching children when they're coming to school how to regulate their emotions and their social, you know, issues and such. And we're just hitting the tip of that. But it's there. And the Student Success Act money, the number-one criteria for that money to be implemented is mental and behavioral health. Number one. So we're going to make sure that we, you know, apply for that money and get that money and start implementing it for that reason, and then also the equity components as well. So.
Anybody else? School board, anything to add to that? Anyone from the city want to toss in something? Okay, we're out of time, unfortunately. I think we could all probably be here all night. Would love to listen to more questions and provide more answers. I can say this is, you know, even in the 30 minutes that we've had this section, it seems like this has been very popular, something maybe we can do again. We can consider a joint town hall meeting like this. But as you know, the principal reason for coming tonight was the first portion of our evening. So with this, I just have a couple of things. I definitely first want to thank the panel. I don't know if they're still in the audience, but thank you so much for the courage to come forward and share your experiences in our community. That's definitely not easy. I want to thank our city staff, including especially Elizabeth Gray, who's put so much time into this event. Also want to thank Kristy Davis of the Silver Falls Library. Thank Chi Sa for her thoughtful facilitation tonight, and to the high school staff for hosting us tonight. Thanks to the superintendent, Mr. Peterson, has really been, I said it earlier, a partner in leading on this front. And I really expect us to have more of this conversation. This is not the last thing. As you heard earlier, we will continue talking about this. We'll continue until we don't have to anymore. But thank you so much to the city council and to the school board for joining us tonight. I know these people are not going to run right out the door if you have a question for them. But as Councilor Plummer said, we all do meet publicly, and we'd love to see you there. It's, for us at least, I don't know about the school board, it's not a very packed house right now, so we'd love people to join us. But thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate you taking the time out of your evening and joining us for this very important meeting. Thank you. Two things, the meeting pulse is going to stay open for a while, so if you're logged into that and you have other questions, that's one way you can do that. But there is also the same questions that are on the meeting pulse, an opportunity for you to write questions if you want to and leave them in the box outside. That will help us develop where this conversation needs to go. Was that what you wanted me to remind you of? Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone.